I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're in the meeting. Start with a roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Anita Lowery.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Janie Robbord.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Peter Hungate.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Joe Toward.
Here.
City Attorney and City Clerk of the attendance. Next, we need a motion to adopt our agenda. Do have a couple changes to that. One, we need to add our memorandum of understanding with the school. Add that to item number five of the business. Also, to exclude the executive session. We have a motion second. All those in favor say yes. Yes. Motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from September eleventh.
Did we do Ta-tos on the address?
If you found it.
No, I didn't know if we do it or...
Just go. Do it type of...
It was just the second page, the fifth line down, he said it is, was...
Yeah, just give a thing. All right, if there's nothing else, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we have done the minutes as well.
Motion second. All those in favor say yes. All those who say no, motion carries. Next is our public forum. Pretty small crowd tonight. Is there anyone that wants to address the council? So Scott Davis was planning on coming tonight. Scott is from Lincoln, I believe, or has been. He is currently doing, he's getting with different cities. He's done Tawny Town, he's did one for Prairie Grove, Farmington, a couple others where he's doing, he's going around interviewing some of the older generations in the towns and documenting this on film, putting it on YouTube. And so it's kind of a neat project. It would be neat for Westport. It's fairly expensive. He was gonna come to the library. He was gonna give us a little presentation of some of the work that he's completed for these other towns. You can go on YouTube and find some of it. I've watched one from Prairie Grove where, I didn't know this, but the water tower apparently fell on Crescent Park and stole back in the early seventies. So that was kinda interesting. But anyway, something he wants to propose to us. I told him that our budget was tied this year, didn't know that we could work it in this year, but it was something that, you know, I thought the community would be interested in. But I would assume he would be here at some point to discuss that with council. Show you guys what he has. All right. Okay, move into the public forum. Move into our business reports. Plan and Commission first, Walter.
Unfortunately, really nothing to report. Last month, we did make a quorum. I was ill and one of our other members was out of town. So really, it's just ongoing business. Hopefully, pretty soon, we'll have two other members and that situation doesn't happen again. That's really about it. Hopefully, next month, it's not this Thursday, but next one, we'll be able to do some work on our ongoing business.
Any questions, Walter?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, yes.
Well, we're on the Plan and Commission. Jack, have you turned in your application yet?
I did, just now.
Yes, sir.
Just now.
Okay.
Got it.
Will we do that tonight, or is that something that needs to wait until another meeting?
Get her done.
For Plan and Commission?
I would like to recommend Jack to Plan and Commission, to see all of them through. All those in favor of that?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Jack, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, next is our Economic Education Committee. Report, Jennifer.
Okay, so the Tree City giveaway has been canceled and the funds are gonna go into the memorial project. We're still going to purchase a replacement for the tree. We discussed in the last meeting that since the city doesn't own that property, that maybe we would replant the tree near the memorial project where the city owns land. The memorial project is taking, you know, shape. We've got a beautiful drawing that we're working with, got a lot of good ideas. We will meet next Tuesday. The Small Town Big Lights Parade is taking shape as well. Anyone that's interested in working on that or has ideas on how that might work should contact Ann Upton. And the Small Town Big Lights lighting contest will also take place. So the parade's going to be on December the first. The lighting contest will be like it was last year where folks will have time to put their lights up. And I think we decided that the date to submit to be judged would be that Monday, I think it's the seventeenth or the sixteenth, and then the judging would take place on that Tuesday. So I think that is all that I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Next, elaborate report, John.
Not a whole lot to report tonight. Just wanted to remind everyone that our friends at the library is having their fall benefit sale on October nineteenth and twentieth, Friday and Saturday. Friday from twelve to six, Saturday from eight to twelve, I think, eight to noon. And that's always a good fundraiser for the friends. And we get good support from the community on that. And we've got our children's program rolling now. Shannon Reed is our new children's librarian. I think she's gonna be building that program up and we're already getting some momentum. We had fourteen kids at the last storytime. There'll be another one tomorrow morning at ten. And I look for our numbers to stay up, probably go up and stay pretty high for the rest of the fall and on through. And so anyways, she's already been a big help to us. So I think she's gonna be, she's gonna be a real good addition. And then I just can announce tentatively that we're, we're gonna be hosting an author event with Janelle Campbell, a local author who's written a book on Westport history. And she's a very good author, so I think it's gonna be an excellent history of Westport. And we have a tentative date set for that on November seventeenth for her to talk about the book and probably answer questions, probably give a presentation. And so we're looking forward to that on November seventeenth, tentatively. So, and other than that, we're hanging in there.
Any questions for John?
What was the date on the document?
Nineteenth and twentieth, that's a Friday and Saturday.
I like the addition of the last year's circulation figure.
Oh, yeah, that's right, comparison. We're facing, like, you know, every other organization, there's lots of competition nowadays, so we'll, it's almost guaranteed we'll talk about circulation numbers and at our board meetings and why, you know, they're gone down or it's hard to keep them up at this point. I think libraries are moving more to other things other than checkouts for, as far as using, justifying, I guess, their value. And so, you know, we're, we need to do more of that too, you know, operating programs and so forth and making sure that we're meeting the needs of the community, so.
Any other questions? Thanks, John. Next, the Court Report. Just call it up.
Okay. I was looking at my numbers last month, were down a little bit from the previous month, but we're still up overall over what last year's numbers were. Even our filings were down a little bit, but I think the August number is due to, mainly most of those were parking tickets. I would say about four hundred ninety-nine of those were probably parking tickets. And I did total my year count for you this month, that is correct. So that number, you know, we're up overall over last year, about seventy thousand dollars. So having that second position, or the third position, the part-time position, has really helped us with collections, being able to stay on top of people who are a little delinquent and we can jump on them and get the warrants issued and send them out reminders to get payments made. So that has helped and I think that pays for itself. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks, Collette.
Thank you.
Chief Nelson?
All right, we are three hundred sixty-five service calls, which were down. That's a good thing. Twenty-three reports taken, ninety-nine citations, that's a little bit lower. Two MIPs, two DWIs, and fifty-five warrants served. One thing I wanted to point out, if you flip a couple pages, we started doing a school report, which will show you guys what's going on and what we're doing in the school. We had fourteen incidents, eight juvenile warnings, four citations. What I do want to point out is on the adults, that was done outside of school. We didn't cite thirty-seven adults at the school this, this month. So don't be alarmed, we're not, we're not hounding the school. We did teach some drunk driving classes, did some online Alice refreshers. We have not reported much on training. Next year, we'll have a, next year, next month, we'll have a bunch to report. That's about what I have. I did go to the Police Chief's Commission or Police Chief's Convention. It was good. We talked about marijuana and the small towns and right, and big towns, and right now it's up in the air. Everybody knows what to do or what they're gonna do or what they're gonna enforce or not, or it's just that DA says, well, they're just gonna turn their back on it if it's there. So there'll be a lot of questions come up with that. We also did our Coffee with the Cop. We did that over at the Why Not Cafe. I wish we had had a little bit bigger turnout. We had, I think, every politician in Northwest Arkansas show up.
So much.
That's right, but not. Our next one will be, I guess it's gonna be Coke with the Cop. It's gonna be over there at the Sugar Shack. When was that? I think it's gonna be November the eighteenth at six P.M. So we'll see if we have a little bit bigger crowd. And it's just, what it's set up to do is just, if any citizens have any complaints or concerns or wanna talk to us about stuff, they can come and talk to us in open form, why we're drinking coffee, I guess, or Coke. And it's just for us to, to be able to tell them what we're doing and why we're doing that. And, and just kinda opens the lines of communication except for, you know, and other lines besides just Facebook and what they do on Facebook. So we're gonna keep trying to do that and see how that goes. Any questions?
This might not be the place for this, but the DA being ambiguous and not having his back, is that simple possession, is distribution? I mean, is there a sense that if someone's deeply involved in this, other states have regulated their growers or sales?
They said they're gonna, they're gonna take it by a case-by-case basis. They said their most important thing is opioids right now. We even, we even got down to say, you know, if you can have two-point-five ounces of marijuana and we find somebody with ten, do we leave them with the two-point-five and just take the remainder?
Nice one. It was curious about a few thousand.
And that's, and we're not getting any really clear answers on that yet.
So it's really...
It's really gray as of right now. But I'm sure, when I find out something, I let you guys know, and I'm sure others, if they find out something, they'll let you know. And there may be policies within the city or, I don't know yet. I don't know how that's all gonna play out.
And employment's in the same situation.
Yeah, everybody's just not sure yet.
Who else?
So, John, I really like the idea of the Coffee with the Cop and the community placing the critical factors. Hopefully that will be able to take off.
We hope, we hope.
Thank you, sir. Public Works?
I didn't have any minutes to put in the packet this month. We will meet in the next couple weeks. I should have some minutes next month. Last month, I reported that we did some TV work down here on Ann Street, McKnight, in the sewer system. We've identified a couple of problem spots that we're gonna hopefully try to fix in-house. I'm probably gonna turn Nick loose to start drawing them up. I didn't do that.
You can just whittle it.
Step away from the mic.
Stay down.
Just be good.
All right. Probably gonna turn Nick loose to draw those up and start trying to get Health Department approval to just get them replaced. Goodwin and Goodwin, kinda give me a ballpark number of what it's gonna cost to do three-hundred-foot of eight-inch sewer and it's forty-five thousand dollars, so we can probably do that a lot cheaper in-house. So, so yeah, we're probably just gonna let him get that drawn up and try to do it probably early next year. Water loss was up. We had a couple leaks on Centennial down there. We got a problem, two and a quarter down there that blows out. I did attend a floodplain management convention in Eureka Springs. I learned quite a bit. It's gonna be really hard to get my certification in that, so I'm trying to start with that and start studying. Probably have to take a four-day class in May and then an exam at the end of that. So hopefully I can get that knocked out. The mayor and I did meet with the railroad about some sidewalks here across the tracks. It went really well. I think we're gonna be able to get that accomplished with possibly closing one of our street crossings here at Wheeler. So I'm, he was pretty optimistic that we can get that done and maybe get, maybe get most of it paid for even, is the way I kinda took that when we walked away from there. So, so I'm excited about that. Other than that, I've been holding the co-op's hand, trying to get them, I reviewed their building plans with Mark and we turned our comments in and Hawkins Weir is doing the water main extension and I've been emailing every day with them about something. They're, they're gonna bore Highway seventy-one, so, so they're trying to get some plans together to get up here to get reviewed. So other than that, that's about all I got.
Any questions, Roger?
Is the sidewalk deal, is it a trade-off where you closed, you had to close the street to, to them to give you a sidewalk?
It's beneficial for their insurance if we close one of our road crossings. And that one is in terrible condition anyway and probably two or three people don't use it a day. So, so yeah, it's kind of a trade-off.
So part of that trade-off is they would give us one crossing here on Main Street and then another crossing on White Street. So the idea that Isaac has came up with is we would demo the sidewalk that's currently on the north side of Main and put a crossing where we'd get across the street from both of these, whether parallel to us, perpendicular to us right now. So we'd cross the street there and then have access to cross the tracks.
Are they interested in ever getting that the crossing called, you know, like everything that comes down and...
Yeah. That, that's what they'd really like, but those are about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Oh.
Yeah.
That would be honest.
Some of it, anyway. But what they were talking about, like Isaac said, if, if we will close that Wheeler crossing, they sounded like they would, well, can we have the memorandum? They provided us something, just kind of a verbal agreement that we came to, that basically they will put in the labor and, what'd they call those? Was it pallets? It was plates or something?
Yeah, those concrete planks for, like the ones you drive on here, they'll just extend them out for our sidewalk to go up and tie into. And they'll have to replace ties on, on the south side of Main Street and the north side of White out to accommodate those concrete plates. And even with them doing that, even if we had to pay for that, it wasn't gonna be, it's gonna be about forty-five hundred dollars a crossing, even if we had to pay for it.
So that road would be, Wheeler would be...
Just the cross.
Just the crossing. From Campbell to Maple.
So basically, Isaac would come in and pull up the asphalt and bring it back to grass on both sides. Now, would Isaac do that or would they, since it's their...
We can do, we can do up to a cer- certain point. They would want us to get within, I think he said ten feet of their tracks.
And then we would get the, the construction debris, which I think Chad can use down at the corner.
Have one thirty-foot easement, you send it along the track.
Twenty-five. It's twenty-five down here, isn't it? Fifty-foot total?
No, I think it's fifty.
Fifty from the edge of the track?
Is there, is there easement? So the procedures involved in that are, we would have to hold a public hearing before we could do that, to close that. If everyone's in agreeance that we want to be pulled with it, we'd hold a public hearing before the next meeting. And they said if we could, if we could get it approved to close that, they could have the sidewalks in by then.
So it's something we wanted to bring up for the council, see what you guys thought about it. Memory usage, just a few people again.
Yeah.
It's so rugged.
I wouldn't, I'm not driving my vehicle across it, so.
No, when it, when it used to be a little smoother, you could try to beat all the school traffic going down.
Yeah.
But now that it's so rough, you don't have to...
Yeah.
Well, and that would stop bad even more.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's a, it's a good, good deal either way.
So you're looking for a motion to...
No, no, I'm not looking for a motion, just wanted to bring it up to you, make sure the council's okay with proceeding. Isaac's talked to the fire chief about it. I don't think he has any terrible heartburn on him.
I don't. Not to mention any names, but former fire chief, we have huge issue.
Well, maybe you'll...
Huge. But no, I have no, if the train hits somebody or derails, it's gonna close every crossing we have. It doesn't matter, that doesn't help us hurt us, like everybody else, I'm not gonna drive a fire truck because that road's running around.
Bring the leaf for him.
Yeah.
I made a good, I made a good trade-off. It is.
It will save, the thing that drove me crazy, and ever since I've been in this seat, I've been on Isaac to try to get that accomplished, and it's taken two years to get this far. But I, I get tired of seeing a mother in a stroller come out in the street or some kid on a bicycle, you know, they, they can't stay on the sidewalk because the train tracks are in the way, so.
So I took these all.
Took some railroad, man.
If the railroad don't wanna talk to you, they ain't gonna...
That's right.
It's been going on longer than...
Yeah. So if everyone's in agreeance with that, we'll go ahead and move forward with that.
I'd be delighted.
We haven't seen your attorney get involved, and Christie can get that drawn out. We'll have it on the docket for next month.
Thank you.
Chad?
I just had one thing from your pack that I wanted to point out. I do have a committee member position open. One of my members resigned due to, she moved outside the city limits. And we only, our ordinance only allows for two, and I already have two, so she, she resigned, so I do have a position open there. And we've advertised that a little bit. We're gonna take applications for, I forgot, early November. And then hopefully we'll have someone to bring to y'all next month for a recommendation for that. Other than that, it's just been business as usual and just taking care of the parks and trying to be doing the pea-weeding, football flag programs and those things. So other than what's on the agenda, I don't really have anything else.
I did Jack voice here. He said he don't have a lot going on, he's wanting to get real involved.
Okay. He might wanna serve on that as well. I don't have one, one application turned in and, and so far, I think a person would probably be a good one and bring a different perspective to our parks as, as well. We all are a little bit sports-minded and sometimes we need some, some others out there with other ideas and thoughts, so. But we'll see who else we get and the committee will look at them and choose someone to recommend, so.
Any questions for Chad?
It's hot up here. It's blowing out here somewhere, so. Is that it?
All right. Thank you, sir. Chief Myers?
Not a whole lot. We will be doing our trunk-or-treat, safe stop, whatever you wanna call it, everybody's a different name for it. Be Halloween, thirty-first, five-thirty to eight-thirty, back over at the school again. Be us and I'm sure the police department, Central EMS, trying to get some more people involved in it, so maybe we can get a few more people to show up. Fire prevention week this week, so we're gonna be at the schools a lot, already have been. Smoke trailer will be there tomorrow and the next day, so it's always a busy week. And we'll be in Greenland on the twenty-second. Made it through another bike-pleasing barbecue without any incidents in our area, two years in a row, we ended in wrecks, great. We were way down on our call, or I said way down, we were nine short from where we were last year. So this month, we've had all year fifty-four calls, so. Are doing the coke drive again, so anybody's got any extra, extra coke to drop off, please, please bring them by. We always run short. We get a ton of big stuff, need little. We get a ton of little, need big, so we take it all. But other than that's all I've got.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Christie?
I don't have much specific on the current budget. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. For the most part, I think we're about where we should be for this year. Most departments are, still have quite a bit of room in their budget, so overall, I think we're doing good. We have started budgeting for next year. We've already had one meeting with the department heads and hurt their feelings a little bit, took a little bit of money from them, trying to get numbers where we can. We're not quite ready for a council workshop yet. We are working on numbers for insurance still and also estimates for the building projects that we have coming up. So once we have those, I think it'll be maybe mid-November and we'll be ready for the, for a council workshop to get that done. The budget looks pretty good. If we didn't have building projects, it would look really good. So we're still going back and forth on the building projects, trying to find the best layout. The library's fairly set, I don't know, there, there's a whole lot more that we can change there. But this building, we kinda went back to them last week and said, let's start over with a whole different design, try to make this a little bit less costly. So they've, they're getting those together for us. Hopefully, about the end of this month, we'll have definite plans and definite numbers on what we're looking at there. Those building projects are gonna be over budget, so something to keep in mind that we, we're gonna try really hard to find money in our budget for next year to make sure that we can cover all of that without having to get into reserves. But just be thinking about the fact that if, there's possibility, we may have to look into getting into reserves, unless somebody's got some really good ideas that we haven't thought of yet. On the insurance, I do want to make you aware that we are going to change companies. We are... We are, insurance will be through the same United Healthcare that it's been through, but we are gonna go with a broker that, um, is gonna make it where our employees have multiple options for insurance. They can go in and choose a policy that works best for them and their family. We'll have HSA accounts available, as well as, um, regular PPO type accounts. They'll have multiple choices on the type of, the level of vision and dental they want, um, as well as have the, the ability to add, um, long-term, short-term disability, accident policies, cancer policies, that type of stuff also. Um, so we'll be able to do that with very little increase, um, from what we're paying now. We got our renewal in from our current, um, insurance, and it was gonna be a nine percent increase, um, for this year, which we didn't have one last year, so we're probably paying for that a little bit this year, um, but with this new insurance, we'll be able to keep that increase down actually, um, a little bit. We are gonna go up in cost a little bit, most likely, but it's not gonna be the nine percent, um, and something that we can easily fit in the budget.
And so, to add to what Christie was just saying with the insurance, we currently, we provide it for the employee, right? We cover that, um, and I think you told me, Christie, that we don't have one employee whose family is on the city insurance. And so, we provide it, but the options are so expensive that we don't have any family members taking advantage of the insurance. And so, hopefully with this, it, it will provide some options that maybe, maybe will lower the cost, and I'm not saying we want people on it, but it would be nice if the employees had the option to put their family on, on one plane, uh, instead of, uh, you know, a husband being covered here, a wife having to be covered by her plane at work or, or an outside plane. So, the, that's, that's one of the, the big keys to this, is it's gonna open it up and give them, we, we have one, one plane currently. If you don't like it, that's too bad, this is what you get. And so, that's, we're not trying to take anyone's coverage away, we're trying to give more options, uh, make it, make it a better, uh, benefit to the employees, students. Christie also talked about those building, uh, budgets. We have a sheet in here that shows what those budgets are for each of the three buildings left for construction, so you guys can look at that. Neither the police, nor, police and court, nor the library, uh, have came in at those, so they're, they're both over budget, what was estimated, what's it been, three years ago? So.
And those numbers are actually not the budget numbers, that's what's in the account now, which includes interest.
Yes.
So it's actually a, a little bit smaller than, than those numbers, but we're still quite a bit over budget with what we have right now.
Is Brad Parks going to, for the redesign, is that an additional fee?
No. We were early enough in the process that he said we were, we were fine.
Was it?
I was, I was sweating bullets to go talk to him, I would, but he assured me it was fine, and we were early enough in the process that we were okay.
And I'd just like to point out, Chad came up with an ingenious idea, put a porch building to cut some costs, so they were adding some restrooms in here. Chad's idea, he was completely outside the box, um, so that's why I give it to him on this, because everyone else that had looked at this, you know, how are we gonna cut costs? Chad looked at it for ten minutes and says, let's just turn it around. So it solves the problem, and he's right, it did, so it was brilliant.
I'm a poor boy.
That's what I said.
The mayor hates porta-potties.
We pay almost six thousand a year for porta-potties. Any questions for Christie?
People are always asking, are we gonna be planning starting those projects?
So are we.
If everything goes smoothly and we can figure out the money, I don't see why we wouldn't be starting close to the first of the year. We still have to go through the process of bids and all that, which will take thirty or more days, and.
Well, it's a good time to be here.
So, the first of the year shortly after the first of the year, I think we'll be, we should be close to that.
With the library, there's not a lot we can shave off, so that's, we were, uh, these department heads can tell you, almost every one of these department heads gave up money out of their budget, so that we can, we can cover the cost of adding this budget, so. And we're, we're still looking at some changing numbers, especially with this building, the library, there's not a lot of changes that can be made there. Any other questions? So we don't have any old business, new business. First new business is to approve our five meals for, uh, the county property taxes. And so this is, we do this every year. It, uh, I don't know the whole procedure here, but it, we basically have to claim our right to those five meals, otherwise the county don't give them to us. I think it was Tawny Town a couple of years ago.
Yeah, somebody forgot their draw.
Right.
And caves, was it cave spring?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
We just need a vote in the minutes, saying that we.
Yeah, they took your, uh, their dysfunction all over it.
So, uh, if there's no questions, I would entertain a motion to move forward with that.
Yeah, to, to notify the, uh, county that we would like to have, there'll be five meals for us, as always.
I'll make that motion. So a motion second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next, we don't have a ordinance number there, but the idea is, and Isaac can come and speak to this a little bit, we're vacating one of our easements, uh, on a property in the city. Isaac, can you come up here and give us a little information on this?
This will be at the top of, uh, Culp Trail, all the way at the very, very top. I think years ago, it was a planned subdivision that never took shape. Well, there was a utility easement, a thirty-foot utility easement that was designated for the city. Mr. McLean has purchased all of that and has no need for that easement up there, uh, so he had asked us to, to vacate that easement. We're also working with Mr. McLean about an easement for sewer down here on Dyke Creek, for our, uh, our gravity line going towards Fayetteville, so this is kind of an exchange, we vacate this easement, we get easement down there on Dyke Creek at his property, so.
So Mayor, uh, we were just talking about, we're gonna close a road, and the way we're gonna do that is have a public hearing and, and have a vote on ordinance. In this one, we're doing it differently because he owns all around it, and so no one's using it, and there's no neighboring land that would notify about the fact that it's closed, so we're gonna do that just by the ordinance.
Any questions concerning? Second.
Vacate.
We're gonna suspend the rules. So we have a motion to suspend the rules.
Make that one, too?
Okay. We have a second for that number?
My second.
Motion second to suspend the rules.
It'll be real call first.
Mr. Cottle? Anita Lowry?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Joe Teller?
Yes.
Any of y'all in favor?
So Mayor, I read the ordinance title, it's an ordinance to vacate a thirty-foot line, he's been located to eighty-one Culp Trail, it's due, oops, what's for it? Parks itself. And, um, again, uh, I think there are some streets within there, too. I'm not sure, you know, but they've never been open, they've never been fenced.
No, no. If, if you look at the old plot, it's a, it's a, it's almost a plot and subdivision, but nothing was ever done in there.
So you never get it to? So, yeah, so he'll, he'll build houses right in the middle of it, I guess.
Yeah, I, I think he did a lot of play up there, something up there, he's deepening off parts of his brother Mallard or something.
Mayor, you could accept a motion to pass now, have a little vote.
A motion?
Right.
Second. Mr. Cottle?
Yes.
Anita Lowry?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
And Joe Teller?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next is the budget adjustment for the parks. And we hit, do have a sheet, or, I guess the back page of Chad, and then it's, uh, give a little bit of detail what's going on here, Chad.
Yeah, I'm just really coming to you asking permission to go over on my Capitol Outlay Line, 'cause I've already used it up for this year. And it, it's to finish our asphalt project at Carter Park. Our original plan was to do part of it this year, and we have, and then to, to do the rest of it on next year's budget. The issue we ran into trying to do it that way was trying to get it done before the season starts, so, uh, we wound up not having a good winter, and we wound up doing it spring break when there was very little going on down there, and, but trying to squeeze that in, maybe we have a good January and February and we can get it in, but my budget right now is in pretty good shape, so the amount that I'm asking to go over, I think that my budget will, I'll be in good enough shape over on, on, uh, or under on enough other item, line items that, uh, it will absorb it, so my, I'm still gonna come in close to, to budget. And if I do go over a little bit with it, uh, I have money in reserves that, that can be used as well. So I'm not asking for the council to give me any extra money, I just need permission to go over. It's, it's the, to finish up the project, uh, it's basically, we asphalted around three-quarters of our concession stand out to our, um, our bleachers, and some of y'all that have been down there and stuff, it, it really made a huge difference and nice. So we wanna finish that out, and then we also wanna asphalt the, uh, gravel driveway going out, uh, all the way up to the, uh, the entrance, um, and make that a little better accessible, not only for driving down in there, but for people coming in, walking in strollers and things like that, coming in to the park on that side as well. So i- i- it's, it's really a good thing, so, uh, it's gonna be about nineteen thousand five hundred is what we're looking at to finish that. So, I, I just would like permission to go over on that line with the, with the foreknowledge that, um, my budget should absorb it. Uh, it's actually Cooper. He's the one that has, he's did our parking lot, um, as well as, um, the, the pro- the original, what we did in, in the spring.
Is that just the hot top number, or is there base and hot as well?
Base, yeah, base and prep as well.
Any other questions for Chad?
I'll make a motion to let him exceed his budget this year, project.
Exceed that, that line out.
Correct.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Weather permitting, can they start audit, considering it's late this week or early next week?
So next out of new business is to approve the audit contracts for the city and water for twenty-seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. We have those contracts, the contracts are almost as thick as the audit reports. I hope everyone read through those thoroughly.
Heath, can I point out, the prices have not changed. The only difference as far as price goes is with the water audit, he put some wording in there that if he has to do some extra work, um, because of the bonds and stuff that we have going on, there's a different level of audit that he may have to do, so depending on the time he has to spend on that, there may be a small charge on there, he's got that in there, but otherwise, the, the prices of audits generally have not changed.
Any questions concerning about that? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
As opposed, no? Motion carries. I feel like we don't have much of a crowd, and our sound system's down, and everybody's whispering up here, including myself. Uh, next item on the agenda is the police school memorandum, John, you wanna speak to this?
This is the same basic agreement it was last year. The only change, after much debate, going back and forth, would be that the school would assume sixty-five percent of the cost, we would go to thirty-five percent of the cost. It would save us a total of about eighty-one hundred dollars for the nine-month period. So, everything else is the same, the school board went with it, uh, ten-eight of this year, and the rest is up to you guys, if that's something. I think it makes it more fair, I think we were, last year we went to fifty-fifty, I don't think we got them nearly to fifty-fifty. We'd even talked about seventy-five, twenty-five, and then we came to the agreement of sixty-five, thirty-five, after going back and forth. And this is just a yearly thing, if sixty-five, thirty-five doesn't work, then we can turn and say seventy-five, twenty-five, or we can, you know, whatever he, whatever we can decide, but I think so far this year, they've, they've, so far this month, they've, they've stuck to this, and it's been a pretty good agreement. We're now sending time sheets to them, I'm telling them every month, this is the overtime he's accrued at the school, this is what you have to give him off. I think that got caught in the wayside last time, and then comes some time, and you're stuck with tons of, tons of vacation, tons of comp time and everything else. I think we're handling that a little bit better, and I just think it's, overall, it'll be better for, for us, I know, and for them also.
Some of the things John has mentioned, there's, uh, the school pays some of that salary, and the school warrants a hundred percent of the officer's time, right? Anytime the school has a ballgame somewhere, they want Officer Goggins to be present, uh, and so Chief Nelson struggles with, how do I schedule the rest of my department around this guy, you know, I can use him part of the time, and part of the time I can't, so that's where this horse trading of fifty-fifty, sixty-five, thirty-five is coming in.
We don't wanna lose total control of our office. We don't wanna not be able to use them any through the year. You know, if it comes down to where we can only use them seven weeks a year, then I can't justify, probably even barely seventy-five, twenty-five. And I've expressed that to them, so I think that, and so far, it has been much better this year. I think it's been a lot fairer, too.
Any questions concerning this agreement? Do we have a motion? What?
We, the good citizens, block fridge.
All right, motion in second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries?
No, we're just fine.
Officer Goggins, is everything going well in the school?
Uh, yes, it's been busier than I thought, but of course it did.
Are you liking it?
Chief! So far, yes. The schedule is nice, but I'm staying busy, getting to kind of, take care of some housekeeping stuff here, too, and we're trying to work on some training, so since it's a lot here to kind of, we're about seventy, seventy, if you want. Yes, sir.
Good. So for comments, I think we've covered just about everything, gentlemen, we talked about the Christmas parade and the lighting contest, we can make sure we get that promoted, uh, be sure to get involved in that, uh, with the, with the A and E Development Committee. Talked about the budget meeting, kind of push that off till we get some better numbers for you guys, uh, changes to the blueprints here in the court. So the change is, originally, the court was gonna stay just like it faced, the same direction it currently faces, it's gonna move back into the hall a little bit. What Chad has proposed, and everyone likes, is taking the court and completely swinging it around. And so then, eliminate building a lot of our offices, you know, eliminate building, a new set of bathrooms, it really solved a lot of problems, and, uh, I get Chad bad time, but it's, it's a brilliant idea. And so simple, that's, that's the beauty of it, I guess. That's really all I have, everything else is going really well. Any questions, comments out of council?
Can I ask a question on my council? Can I have the question?
Might as well. Might as well.
The houses up behind the parks?
Yes, ma'am.
When are they gonna put their streets, their curb and gutter in and all that kind of stuff, they got a house already for sale.
And that house isn't even finished yet, so, Isaac, have you heard anything on a timeline for that?
No.
I would think at that price follow, they're definitely gonna have to get that pavement stuff finished before it sells.
Well, if you go, you drive up there right after rain, they're gonna have a great drainage problem, so is the school.
Sure. Yeah, you're absolutely right, I just can't imagine someone giving half a million dollars for that and driving over that, you know, that shot rock, and, uh, so I, I don't know when they're gonna do it.
We had a comment from a guy that had built some houses down here, and he said, everybody should treat people. Which if I'm not mistaken, I think we're used to, that had to be done before they could start building.
Now, that may be the case on subdivisions, I don't know that that's the case on, that's not a subdivision.
It is not?
No, 'cause it's just two houses.
Oh, I think it's three.
It's just two.
It's just two, but, you know, there's another lot up there that I'm not sure.
So I think that's the difference, um, in why he can do it prior to getting streets and carrots and, he doesn't even, theoretically, he doesn't even have to, uh, curb and gutter that or pavement, he could have, uh, he could have built a dirt road up to those.
I was in school though, I would be highly upset if this was going to exist.
Yeah, it could be.
I don't know where we come in in that, or if we come in in that, but I mean, it's, it's lousy.
Hopefully it gets better once, hey, just. All right, did you have anything else, Paulie? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion is second, Jim? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Motion carries.